Call me in order, please.
Not one day.
Yeah, one good laugh. Lonnie, would you deliver the invitation, please?
As long as we gather together tonight and that's in business, we just ask you to watch over every person and every home that's here going through the holidays and watch over everyone all through these seasons. Amen.
Jim, please.
Much allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor has a copy of the agenda. We're gonna hand a motion. I'm not much motion for me. Motion to approve the agenda? Motion to second discussion?
Were we gonna discuss salary increases, timing of salary increases? Were you gonna wait until the January meeting? Were you playing with it?
That's fine.
As long as it doesn't automatically have a...
January, we have better information than we have now. What would make the decision?
Well, we were gonna vote on that at some time.
We could do that in January. January. Any other discussion on the agenda? Be in our own paper, show hands. Thank you, counsel. Minutes of the November 2006, November 6, 2017 regular meeting?
Regular council meeting Monday, November 6, 2017. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order conflict 6:00 PM. He requested John Faust give the invitation. Councilmember Jim Looney led a recital pledge allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked if the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Cart List of Old Business of October 2nd, 2017 regular meeting. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried with Ann Snady and Tony Fountain abstaining since they were absent before the October meeting. Item A under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Lonnie Waters regarding new street sign requirements. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to purchase a portion of the signs before year end at the lowest quote. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion passed unanimously. Item B under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Councilmember Jim Looney from update from the parole pool roper property committee. Councilmember Looney stated that he had talked with someone to do a home inspection of the buildings for $890 and that he's and that an engineer had quoted in excess of $5,000. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the recommendation by Jim Looney to inspect the property. Councilmember Anderson seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Councilmember Jim Looney made an amendment to the original motion to use the home inspector for the cost of $890. Councilmember John Faust seconded that amendment. Motion carried unanimously. Item C under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Councilmember Anderson regarding updates on the personal policy committee. Councilmembers Snady stated that there has been no action by the committee since the last council meeting. Mayor Weaver stated that the side of Mr. Fernando is gonna next month under Old Business. Item D under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized water and sewer superintendent David Hall to discuss the proposed water pollution plant expansion and output move from Polcat branch to below the water intake at Long Swamp Creek. Mr. Hall stated that he had set up a workshop for council to meet with you in turnip seed on February 1st, 2018. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to accept the February 1st workshop date. Councilmember Anderson seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Hall stated that in order to repair the fire hive on South Main Street that there would have to be an insertion, at least one and possibly two insertion valves. He stated that these valves will cost $6,000 to $7,000 each. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve up to $12,000 for the insertion valves. Councilmember Anderson seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item A under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Jackie Dunn to present to council request that the city purchase lighting and sound from Main Street. Mr. Dunn extradition. Mr. Darren Wesley with biking outdoor who sold such equipment. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion that council committee be formed to gather additional information on this equipment. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated that the council committee would consist of Councilmembers Anderson and John Faust. Item A under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Kevin Barker of Grockford Downs self-funding consultant to discuss with council partially self-funding group health insurance. Mr. Grock said that he is asking for council to approve his company to shop the self-funded insurance market exclusively for options available to the city for the upcoming group health insurance renewal. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to allow Mr. Grock to have exclusive ability to shop self-funded insurance. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B under New Business, Mayor Weaver called on Finance Director Lisa Ho to present the 2018 operating budget for council's review. Ms. Ho stated that the public hearing on the budget would be held on November 13th and we would expect to adopt the budget at the next regular council meeting held December 4th. Discussion by council followed. No action necessary. Item C under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sonny Underwood to present to council the 2018 alcohol license for renewal applications. See list attached here too. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to approve the license renewal request and Councilmember Anderson seconded the motion. Motion gave a unanimous vote. Item D under New Business, Mayor Weaver stated that there had been an offer to the city for the sale of land located on Hood Road which holds the city's pump station and several of the city's water and sewer lines. This land was offered to sale to the city in the amount of $8,219 and consists of 7.48 acres. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to purchase the land for $8,219. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried with four votes for the purchase and one vote against. Councilmember Sonny Proctor voted against the purchase. Item A under New Business, Mayor Weaver called on Lonnie Waters to present for council approval the upcoming New Year's Eve celebration. Mr. Waters stated that the celebration costs associated approximately $25,000. Last year, Finance Director Lisa Ho stated that the celebration would be paid for from the unrestricted portion of the hotel rental taxes collected this year and salaries would be paid from the general water and sanitation funds in the city. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to approve the city holding the New Year's Eve celebration at a cost of $25,000. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion did not pass with three votes against. Councilmembers Sonny Proctor, John Faust, and Ann Snady voted again. Economic Development's Jean McFattal gave a report to the city. Finance Director Lisa Ho gave a financial report for the month of October 2017. Lonnie Waters gave a report on the road. Chief Greg Level gave a report of police activities for the month of October 2017. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of October 2017. Councilmember John Faust gave a report on JYSA. Be no other business to come forth council. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the public hearing on November 13th and the regular council meeting to be held December 4th, 2017.
So, can we motion? Remove the motion. Make a motion. Minutes be extended. Motion approved.
I think there's one correction. And I don't ever say that.
What do you?
It just had to do with the second paragraph on the third page or second page where it says $8,200 and something dollars.
$8,219?
I can't read.
$8,219?
But it didn't say per acre.
Didn't say per acre in minutes?
Was it per acre?
No. I think that's... Okay. That is what's the total cost. At the total. It was supposed to be. I don't know what went through. This one right here.
Conversation was that that was total cost.
This one right here.
I think I informed you at the... Well, it's a planning meeting the other night that we did purchase the property plate. That was still not even on.
It was closed. I kept the number. Any other discussion? Be in our own paper, show hands. Who's that? Oh, Johnny.
Who was the second? The second? Would you?
I thought Tony made the motion.
Jim made the motion.
Jim made the motion. Then he had a question.
Who had the same as the second? That motion seconded. Boy, discuss any discussion?
Old saying I hear something.
Well, I wanna go with Tony Fountain making the motion to approve. And I thought I heard Ann second. And then after the discussion, this would be on tape. We'll go back and look at it. Now, we've got Jim with discussion and be no other discussion on paper. What we show in here is what it is.
Bill had discussion.
Here, here the motion.
I had the motion. Okay. Next item is read the minutes of the November 13, 2017 public hearing.
Public hearing Monday, November 13, 2017. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order conflict 6:00 PM. He requested John Faust give the indication. Councilmember Anderson led a recital pledge allegiance. Mayor Weaver opened the floor to comments and questions regarding the proposed 2018 operating budget. Brief discussion of the budget followed. There were no public comments. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to adjourn. Council scheduled to convene next at the regular meeting on December 4th, 2017.
You entertain a motion. Some more. The motion? Motion is second. Discussion. Be in our own paper, show hands. Thank you, counsel. Under Old Business, adoption of 2018 operating budget and resolution.
We, uh, and I didn't bring a resolution.
And where is the resolution?
Senate office.
You wanna go get it?
Yeah, can y'all?
We're gonna need to read it. Back in session.
Lisa? Okay. Whereas, the council budget committee reviewed the mayor and staff's proposed operating and capital budget for calendar year 2018 for the city of Jasper, attached here in and made a part of this resolution through this reference and whereas, the city council of the city of Jasper, the city council reviewed the mayor and staff's proposed operating and capital budget for calendar year 2018 for the city of Jasper as recommended by the council budget committee and whereas, the agenda for the November 6th and December 4th, 2017, meetings of the mayor and city council were duly posted as well as the agenda for the November 13th public hearing and a proposed 2018 operating budget and all related materials were made available to the interested parties. Now therefore be, now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and council of the city of Jasper adopt the 2018 operating budget resolved this fourth day of December, 2017 by voting.
Motion approved as read. Remove the motion. Second. Discussion. Be in our own paper, show hands. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Lisa. Jim, the parole property, item B.
We discussed at the work session last Thursday night that we were going to put the purchase order out for Bledsoe Home Inspections LLC to inspect the property. Assuming it had been done yet.
He's gonna do it next week.
For next week? So, at our next meeting, we'll be able to discuss the condition of the property and then proceed on making decisions on how to react to what to do with the property. How to move on.
Will the committee meet before we come back based on his findings or we wait till the council?
We can meet the workshop. Yeah. And would that be a council decision?
Okay. You can meet prior to that if you wanted, but the party report gives you...
Well, as soon as we get results, we could send them out too.
Item C, personnel policy mistaken. Okay. New business, Jasper Merch Association, New Year's Eve celebration.
Kirk. Good evening, mayor, council. I have prepared for you some items I'm gonna present this evening. Your reference to New Year's Eve celebration. Copy each of you. The exact same thing. So, Ms. Lisa, I didn't know if you wanted or not. I'll do it for you, Tim.
You are welcome.
So, I'm excited to be here this evening on behalf of the Jasper Merchants Association and bring this forth in the hope that we will have a New Year's Eve celebration for the city of Jasper. You have multiple pages here on the front page. We have proposed event details. Main Street closure at 7:00 PM until 1:00 AM. Those are the hours of which we need the street to be closed for safety. Event hours advertised will be from 8:00 PM to midnight for the public. Vendors will be able to set up at 7:00 PM. They'll break down before 1:00 AM. The stage, we would like to have in the handicap parking in front of the courthouse. We would like to have that there simply because it could be placed there during normal business hours on Friday afternoon or whenever it's available for the city to move it. Needs for the event, if you'll follow me right along through this. One need for the event is seven sworn officers for security. The number of officers is a recommendation by Chief Level from the police department. Rate of $30 an hour per officer at Jasper Police Department is the same at the sheriff's office. We understand that Jasper Police Department is a smaller agency. We may have to pull from the sheriff's office in order to get the number of seven officers. That total, you can look at the figures there. $1,260 is the need funding wise for that. Their duties include closing and securing of Main Street with the need of traffic homes. We estimate about 50 of those. North Main secured by the fire chief and the fire department. Spoke to Chief Roper. The large fire truck that we've used in the past, he said would be available by the on staff members then. General security and law enforcement by the officers. Next need is two firefighters, first responders. That is a sponsored item. Any item that you see on your list that says sponsored have already been paid for by sponsors that have come forward to the JMA. And you can see the need there was $360 we have covered. Countdown clock is also a sponsor. Purchase of a new clock from EU Electronics, five inch, six digit, seven color LED countdown clock or comparable product. We understand that product may be out of stock at the time. That includes the remote tripod and power supply pack. That comes in at $226, $27. Quarter potties, another sponsored part of this event. Toe Septic Service, $65 a unit, $85 for handicap unit. The next page, you can see that we're gonna need five regular units and one handicap. We wanna make sure that we have those available for everyone to use. That comes to a total of $410. That's been paid in full by a specific youth sponsor. And that brings us to the DJ entertainment section. So, this is a section that I'm not sure of. I'm gonna need some, some help here and some guidance. In the past, we've used DJ Dana at this event and there's a signed contract for 2017 from September 26th. The amount of $2,518. The approved hours were 7:00 PM to 12:30 AM. And there was a verbal cancellation on November 7th. The cancellation falls within the 60-day cancellation clause, which is in that agreement signed by the city. And as of November 28th, and actually I'll, I'll do that again, as of last night, DJ Dana is still available and per that contract, he'll receive payment whether his services are used or not. That's in the agreement that was signed. And so, I would ask the city to honor that contract whether, you know, the gentleman's gonna be paid whether he's here doing the event with us and helping us promote Jasper or he'll be sitting at home. It's our understanding from that vendor that that contract reads he'll be paid for that.
Mr. Waters? Would you like to answer that?
Whenever we were, the city was planning all this, we did meet, we did write a contract forward and DJ Dan, I explained all that with you and the contract was to be signed. They give it back to him and so that's where we stand. I did call him and tell him and he indicated to me that he did not know what the status would be and he was going to contact me at a later date. So, I mean, that's where we stand right there.
What, what is the amount that he's owed?
$2,518.
Could you bring that to my office?
You'll see below that, we do have a local sponsor willing to step in if the contract is not honored and the sponsor amounts for $1,200 for a local vendor. The next item on the list is the ball drop. I discussed this and I'm not sure the location of the ball, the condition of the ball, or if we can even use the ball. So, I'd like to discuss that and see if that's a possibility.
Well, since the council, council canceled the proceedings, we've not moved forward with testing the ball.
So, do we know the location of the ball or we can at least inspect?
Ball's on city property. It's on city property.
Okay. Is it possible that the ball could be inspected to see if it's available for use?
Well, once we, if council agrees to it, we can.
Okay. So, if that's something we've heard to...
It's a fiberglass pot. Is there any reason it wouldn't be?
No.
It's just not been lit up and moved forward since November meeting.
If it is approved, the merchants association is willing to get a vendor with a crane truck and pay for that expense. Clean up post-event, merchants association is working with the sheriff's office to utilize a handmade detail crew. So, that is going to be free for us to use. Malden Trash Service is also sponsoring an onsite roll-off dumpster. You can see locations to be determined. I would like some recommendations. We'll look at that if the event's approved, where we would like that roll-off dumpster to be placed. I think that's the best way to take the trash service and make sure it's expedited and not gonna use any local resources in payment. Chamber of Commerce is allowing us to borrow multiple metal barrels for the event. We'll use those on Main Street. So, if you have anyone, you know, you already have the trash cans on Main Street. These will be implemented throughout there just as an addition to that. And I will be on site during the cleanup. So, from the start of the event to the very end of the event, the JMA will be present to make sure that it's done accordingly, what we want to be done. I have gone and talked to multiple businesses and specifically about cleanup. Integra Bank has said that in the past with city functions, their parking lots aren't being cleaned properly. And so, I've discussed that with their manager and make sure that we would clean the parking lot as well as the progress parking lot, just to make sure that they're happy with that. On the last page, right here, it says miscellaneous. We've also secured sponsors for advertising. We have sponsors for banners to be printed and a bounce house. I know one's been used in the past, so we have all of that. And I myself have gone to multiple businesses on Main Street to determine the impact this event could have on our business. There are no negative impacts to present at this time to the council. Most of the businesses, as we know, on a Sunday evening will be closed during those hours. The exception would be restaurants. So, we expect Wingsology, Coaches Cut, they've expressed interest to stay open. And so, those would have a positive impact for business and sales. And what we're leading up to, which is a good question, is the request of the city of Jasper. So, our ultimate request is that we would have the event approved with the exception to the noise ordinance for the event. We understand there is a noise ordinance. I believe it kicks in at 10:00 PM at night and of course, this event would go past that. And so, we wanna make sure that if the event's approved, that noise ordinance is gonna be an exception. We also want Main Street closed. We would like for the city to deliver and pick up the stage and use of the ball if it's in good condition. We certainly wanna have it inspected and tested when we think on the safe being used. The approval of security funding for $1,260 and then I would ask the city to honor the contract for DJ Dana for $2,518. So, the total cost for this request is $3,778. Below there, you can see that $2,518 of that is from the signed contract from DJ Dana. So, the Jasper Merchants Association is moving forward and asking you to honor that contract and $1,260 would be the total cost that we are asking for, for this event. The very last page is your sponsorship breakdown. I won't cover it in detail unless the council would like for you or Mr. Mayor. You can see how our sponsorships break down. You can see where I'm applying balances. And at the very bottom, you can see that so far, we have $3,750 sponsors to date and we still have a remaining balance to spend. Are there any questions I might be able to answer?
The officers?
Yes.
Who's counting the city? Would that be? That, that would be city funds?
The $1,260, yes, sir.
And then also $360 for firefighters?
The $360 is actually sponsored. We have that covered already. That's already paid for.
So, so the $2,518 is what we, we've already agreed to pay the DJ?
Yes, sir.
So, on top, on, just on top of that, all, all, all you guys are asking from the city is $1,260?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Who's going to lift the ball for you?
So, once the event is approved, we're actually going to look out for bids. Quotes is exactly what we did for our Septic Service. The services that we're going to use, we go out and make quotes. We wanna make sure that we're hitting the best deal.
Where you gonna put the ball?
So, the location that we're looking at would be between Wingsology and what used to be Weeks Jewelry and actually fencing off with Runnel Fencing, the entire area. So, no one would be in it or under it. We wanna make sure that it's a secure location. Safety's a top priority and we would make sure that the fire and the security personnel there agree with us that everything is safe.
Who's gonna help you handle, handle the ball? The ball is...
That would be the crane truck operator. That we would...
It takes only just a crane truck operator to handle the ball. Lonnie, would you tell a little bit of what it takes to maintain the ball?
Okay. There has to be security line from the bottom of it. It has to be tied off at some point to some stationary object. As the ball goes up and down, you have to have people guiding those secure lines to make sure nothing gets tangled up and pulls the ball one way or the other. You just need to just have someone. Nobody will back problems or anything like that because this ball, by the time it gets up in air, it's very heavy. And so, if the wind's blowing or whatever, you need enough air to make sure it's stationary and it goes straight up and down.
Since we're talking about this, right behind you, the next gentleman on the list is Joe Walker. Joe, since the city's not gonna be involved in securing the ball and taking care of the, in the weeds, so to speak, of issues dealing with this, it'll be all volunteers. What would be the city's liability?
I would suggest that the merch association purchase a special events policy and name the city Jasper some different insurer.
How much would you recommend?
City's limited liability to me.
And what would be the premium?
I don't know. They just have to go to someone that does that sort of thing and get...
You don't do that sort of thing, do you?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And that particular type of policy, Joe, since I'm not looking at it, would cover our firefighters and policemen and city employees that were with, that weren't gonna do that. The city's still gonna be on the hook for workers' costs and everything else.
Well, these are gonna all be off...
These are off duty officers. These are off duty officers.
Yeah, but they gotta have a special license. They can't operate off their badge. They've gotta have a, uh...
Sir, can?
Oh, help me, John.
Special events.
Gotta have a BI license, a private, not a private investigator, but a...
Well, we, we do many events in town where we have...
Security guards license.
Chief Roper?
That's what they're gonna be doing.
Will you stand, please, sir?
Yeah.
Tell us who you have committed that would commit to work New Year's Eve and...
I don't know as of yet. A lot of the people, once they counsel, but to include myself, have made claims. I don't, can't speak for every one of them. I went to back with Jeff all two deputy days, but I was well posted throughout their agency as the, as all duty work deemed necessary. But I can't give you the exact number of how many of my guys would be interested in working. Furthermore, I cannot order a police officer to work an all-duty job. I can't do that. I need to come to share.
Okay. What about the BI licenses?
I've, I've never heard of that. I worked at Atlanta Police Department. If it was approved, that's your job wasn't served by, at a forbidden place where we couldn't work for sample strip joints and stuff like that.
Were you paid by the city police department?
No, it was paid, paid by that company.
Okay. Chief Roper, you were mentioned as well. What do you have available that you know?
I've got one confirmed for the two that, that we talked about added up right now. I've just got the one confirmed and the two that will be provided off duty for them will be able to handle everything they need, including walking the street on the north end. Right now, I've got one confirmed that's available.
Okay. And you know, so how fireworks are you?
No, sir. At this time, our budget doesn't allow for that. Also, you have to permit for that. You know, this is the new event to us. We wanna make sure we have the basics down first.
Counsel, questions?
Send best, send best issues here. We're not sure if we're gonna be able to have security there or not. How? How long do you guys need? How short a notice can you have?
How short a notice can you have to be able to pull this off and do that in one?
So far, I can say we've had, we've had about four weeks from last council meeting. The day after is when I decided that I would go to the board of directors. I would say within two business, two weeks, within, you know, 14 days, we should have a solid answer. I don't anticipate any issues with the size agency of the sheriff's offices. Being a previous employee there, I know they don't make a lot of money. Off-duty work is something we always look forward to.
Except for the ball being dropped, it's a little more than a mania, a downtown celebration of any kind. The balls are a concern and are my concern. It's more special for liability. And since you're doing this, I would like to go with the recommendation of our broker for our...
Absolutely. You know, if that's an issue and what we're asking the city for here on that last page, the request of the city, you know, those are all additions. If you'd like to scratch one, if the ball is a great concern, that would especially one more or the other.
Can you tell the council who your volunteers are that's going to handle this? One crane operator can't do this.
Well, we would have to go and get quotes from a crane operator and pay them and staff to do that. And we're waiting on event approval per our conversation on the phone before I move forward with that. I did not even know the location of the ball or if it was usable. And we still will know that.
It should.
Yeah.
Have you have a little bit of information that I'm not sure Kirk's aware of? We were approached the other night by the creators of the ball, Devera Designs. And she said she would be willing to help us. So I don't know how much that will help out in your concerns with moving it and stuff. But I know they do have experience with that since they created it. And she was going to be here tonight. I'm not sure if she was detained somewhere else or what. But she has approached us about helping with that, so.
Well, we have the ball attached to a special trailer that we bring out, hooked to the crane, take it up. Set it there until New Year's is dropped. And then we take it off, put it back on the trailer hitch, which is a good year for you. And the first year was, I'm just going to say this and I'm going to be done with it. And I think you can have much less than what we worked to. And I think that's the goal here. When we first did this, and we were sitting on Main Street today, getting the traffic off and preparing. We were concerned with how bad we might look in our efforts of trying to provide a New Year's Eve celebration in town. And I had with me city employees being paid for their efforts, who could move the trailers, clean up the streets, drop, raise the ball, drop the ball the first time. And it was quite an adventure with a paid staff. I'd like the council to be more concerned about who your volunteers are. And I'm sure you can find capable volunteers that could raise a ball and drop a ball with a crane. But it is more than it looks like.
And again, if that is the only concern, then we can take the ball out of the equation. The event itself will be well-staffed. And I don't see any issues, but it seems like the ball's the main concern. And that's something you can certainly, yeah, and that's something you can certainly eliminate if that would make the council...
Well, that's my concern. The council may look at it differently. So I'd like to have the floor for the council.
You don't have the insurance?
We do. So we're a nonprofit, the Jasper Merchants Association, so we do have umbrella policies. As far as specifics on those, I don't have specific...
If the council would decide to vote to approve the $1,260 to get this to help you guys, then y'all have done a phenomenal job. I think this council is in agreement that y'all have done a phenomenal job. And myself, I'm thankful that you helped. You have shown the interest to get this far.
Thank you.
If the council decides to approve the $1,260 in the DJ and what we've already agreed on directly. That would put, that would put you guys to making sure that you have your police officers and your firemen. So if we approve what we need to approve and you cannot get your policeman and fireman there, then I would like for everybody to know that that's something that's out of heart control.
As far as the firefighter standpoint, speaking to the chief at the county level, he will be available that evening. We actually discussed fireworks previously. He's willing to be at the event. So the firefighters, I know I would have covered. As far as the police effort on that, again, we've not advertised at the agencies. They're aware of it's, you know, it's being looked at and talked about. So it's a conversation to have. We've not actually posted the need and therefore people aren't signing up simply because they don't know if it will occur or not until after this meeting. But I do not anticipate any issue of having seven people from that either agency.
I think remember the last meeting, the council made a decision about an event that had historically been carried on. And there was a lot of backlash on that decision. And without going into the specifics of why we each and all made those decisions, I think that to a man, we felt like we were making the right decision. We got a private citizen who's worked his t-hine off trying to pull this off. And I think that anything that we can do to meet him in the middle, I certainly would be supportive of. Again, I'm fully understanding of the liability issues and the safety issues. But you've done a great job. And anytime you can meet in the middle, I think is a good thing. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, thank you. And I have to say that, you know, the hard work has been the Jasper Merchants Association. The board of directors, they're the ones that came on board and decided that we would move forward with this. And so I cannot take over.
Well, and I might say thank you to the Jasper Merchants Association. He said there was a lot of backlash on it. I just felt like it wasn't a taxpayer burden to put on this. So I gotta commend you for getting out and getting sponsors and doing everything that you need to do to put this on.
Thank you very much.
It seems like the community wants this, but I just didn't feel like it's a taxpayer's...
It was evident on social media. Instantly, as soon as that hit the paper, these nice folks over here doing their job. The community loved this agenda and it's been a fantastic event. I attended it every year. And I want Jasper to grow. And this event could be a trademark for our city. And so I think it's something we can certainly grow on every year.
Entertainer motion?
I make a motion that we, that we honor our contract with DJ Dano for the $2,518. With the additional funding of $1,260 to help aid the downtown Merchants Association in doing our New Year's celebration.
Motion second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
I think, Tony, would you say that as long as we get the proper police officers and firemen in place, is the only thing that I see should be a whole thing? Once he says he thinks he can do. I think that's, that's not on our side. That's never a limit.
And I don't anticipate that to be an issue.
I don't either. I just be aware.
Is that with or without the ball?
That's up to the council. If it would make council feel more comfortable, I would certainly say that you could certainly go down this request list and scratch the ball if that's the case. That still doesn't eliminate...
Largest liability.
Yeah, and that still doesn't eliminate the question of at least looking at it to see what type of condition it's in, excuse me, for future use if we're here in 12 months again.
Does it all increase the liability from an insurance standpoint? We got to get a policy anyways, it's still going to be more.
Yeah, it goes away. If y'all see that ball, look through there up there. It's like one big swing from one side to the other.
Gary?
We didn't know until what month?
Y'all have a, give a special events to the Marvel Festival, a free day event. Could you kind of guide them on how to go on that?
Yeah, if I may have a quick moment. So first of all, I just want to endorse the event. I mean, I think it's, I think it's very important to the community. I think it's important to the business community. And that's one of the reasons, and Kirk really did want to run down the list of sponsors. But I'll say this, we are the larger sponsor of this event because we do feel it is consistent with our mission statement and consistent with our objective of supporting our business community and our civic community. And the great thing about this is, you know, Kirk has been doing all the work. We're going to just have to write a check. So this is really good event for us. But circling back to the, to the insurance side, we'll be glad to help them. We take out special event insurance for our Marvel Festival and other things. We have experience along those lines. So I'll be glad to assist them in connecting with the right people to get that done. Rates do vary on the risks. I've never done one that involved a ball drop. It could be a factor, it could not. It really depends. I just don't have enough information. But I do know in general terms, when you're talking about additional risks, it drives your prices higher. So it's very conceivable that it could be more expensive with the ball.
Kirk, would y'all be willing to look at the ball and price the insurance?
Yes.
And that be a possibility?
That would be, my recommendation to the council would be that we can inspect the ball, make sure it's in working order. Have the company that actually created the ball to inspect it to give us an idea if it's in good condition. We can get quotes for an insurance policy. If we're not able to meet that premium, then we would simply decline use of the ball. That would be our desire. If we can meet the premium, then we would certainly move forward with the use of the ball.
I would suggest we add to the motion that the city be named as an insured party at any ball.
And we can, we can light the ball up for you and make sure it works.
Yes.
And show you how to assemble it.
Yes.
We, I don't think the people who build the ball is necessary to come.
Okay.
We're way past that. Any other discussion? Have we changed the amendment to? Yes, she added your attention. Would you give us a little read back on what we have for the motion?
Okay. The motion was to honor the contract with the DJ with the additional funds and...
Your $1,200?
And then an amendment by Tim. That's by Tony, amendment by Tim to be sure the city is named as an insured party. Is there anything else I needed?
That's pretty much it. And I assume that includes the noise ordinance?
We'll build a rest until 1:00. Usually when the weather gets to the streets will be... Okay, you mentioned earlier about cleaning the street because next day's on Monday and the city employees will not be here.
Yes. So as far as cleanup, we're going to use the inmate detail crew from the sheriff's office.
Have you got that approved?
Yes. Tony, the sheriff himself.
He gonna bring inmates out at 1:00 in the morning?
Yes. Dealing with that, what will actually happen, I discussed it with the sheriff. They oftentimes clean up after football games and the high school. And so they have pretty much, you know, it's a science. Same thing with Jeep Fest. They are well aware of how to do that. So he said it would be a very quick and efficient process. He doesn't expect it to be very lengthy. We would work with them as well as Malden with the roll-off dumpster to make sure everything gets placed there.
And we can leave the stage where you want it to be placed until Tuesday?
Yes. It would not impede traffic. And that was the need for it to be placed in that order.
I'll be working with you, whatever you need. Any other discussion?
What about the dumpster? Does he have a place for it or do you got a question for it?
Football games at five? No, it's on the first, not the 31st.
Yes, it's on the first. I'll have to get it. Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Being in all favor, what we're still aiming? Just thank you, council.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Mary.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
This will happen, I'll be... I'll fill the insurance, gentlemen.
The chief police only gave me two minutes. I used too much paper, I should. What I've done is a side-by-side comparison of your current carrier and Traverse Insurance Company. And as you go down, you can see the differences in the coverage. And if you would look over those with the M Marine, which is your blanket tools and equipment for the firefighters and policemen. Gladfilter, your current carrier, ensures that it requires a cost. And Traverse is actually value. In other words, if you lose a piece of equipment such as a heat camera or something like that, it would, depending on how old it was, that's what you would get from Traverse. Whereas what you have, you would get replacement, full replacement cost.
I want to make a little search, Joe. They can't move the trucks without them.
That's right.
Rope for promise. They can't move the trucks without being in its...
Also, being to that on, they're going to be looking at getting a new fire truck for next year?
Yeah.
All right, with Gladfilter, you get full replacement cost on those fire trucks for five years. Truck's four and a half years old, you tow it or somebody hits it and towels it, they're going to buy you a new truck. Whereas with Traverse, it's actual cash value, period. Their defense will be higher on the auto. I don't know if the chief or the, both chiefs are either interested in drones or not, if they're automatically covered with your current. A lot of municipalities are buying drones now and using them for fire and police purposes, search and rescue, that sort of thing. Down here, you'll see on the crime, fraudulent impersonations is not covered in the Traverse crime policy. So if you get somebody coming here impersonating someone and leading you to take their money, cash their check or whatever, taking or calling services for them, there would be no coverage with Traverse. On the second page, if we can go down, you can see medical payments is excluded. Medical payments, if someone slipped laws here at city hall or city property, city-owned property, they would pay up to $10,000 for their medical bills. And of course, if you're sued, then you would pick up that too.
And that's one of our biggest concerns.
Abuse and molestation is not excluded under the general liability. And with Traverse is excluded. Healthcare is excluded. So you take your firemen with paramedics or EMTs out before they're closed and they get sued, then Traverse does not cover that.
They're pretty good at that.
Employee benefits liability, if you have an employee that, I don't know what your waiting period is right now on your health insurance, 30 days or two weeks or whatever. But anyway, if for some reason they fail to get signed up, that's where employee benefits liability would come in if they sue you because they should have been covered and their wife is having a baby or whatever. You'll notice Traverse is setting that retro date back, or up to 1/118. And your current carrier goes all the way back to 2000 if anything ever comes up on that. Law enforcement liability. The A, Gladfilter provides accidental death and dismemberment coverage for the police officers on duty. And it's not available, the Traverse. Employment practices liability. Now, your current carrier pays any defense for an employment-related practice outside of the limits of liability. So, you know, if your defense costs her half a million... So, you know, if your defense costs her half a million, that would, you'd still have the full $1 million for coverage if you so had such claim. So their defense is outside the limits, and Travelers is in the limit. So the cash would be reduced by the expense on the Travelers' policy. Inductive relief, you get $5,000 for an injunctive relief with Travelers. You get $10,000, 10% deductible. Your automobile physical damage is 500 deductible, Travelers is 1,000. And also, the Travelers' policy is auditable at the end of the year. So if you added several vehicles in your, like the new fire truck coming in, they're gonna come in, audit you and pick that up. Whereas with your current carrier, you'll stay right where it's at. They're not gonna charge you for adding a new truck. And you can go and see that sexual abuse and molestation is excluded, discrimination is excluded, drones. And with your current carrier, you have a zero retention. In other words, no deductible. And with Travelers, now this is on the umbrella, Travelers is $10,000, that's insured. So you see there's like $9,000 difference, but if you take all the stuff away from your current carrier.
I've been in the press lately, the council kept me out, and I must have looked over it. Yeah, it's covered there, Joe.
What's that?
The council liability insurance. Could it be in this policy? Where would we have it? We have the council.
Oh, yes, yes, it says. What I did was just comparing stuff where there was and what not. Yes, this would be public officials liability, it isn't employee.
Questions, counsel? Oh, well, I've covered here, Joe.
Jeff, I found a lot of difference, there's a lot of snark over it. So that's the reason I wanted to do this. Now, Joe, almost as practices liability, you got asterisks in the right, can you call it? Or practices? Yes, sir. But there again, our expense is outside the limits, and what we talked about there is inside.
It's covered outside of the limits.
Yeah. Your legal defense is outside the limit, whereas this coverage with Travelers is inside the limit. Therefore, your limits, I'll leave you behind the cost of your defense.
In fact, we wouldn't have to change from that, because I hate changing liability insurance.
But I wanted to lay all this out in a manner where...
At least as long as the total budget, I don't think the budget matters.
Put that hard market.
Well, I don't know the total dollar, man. We measured from what, 12?
We did, but it's actually down $2,000 from what it was.
Well, I know we didn't measure less. Any questions, counsel? So you want us to approve this tonight so we move forward in 2018?
Yes, so I can go ahead and get the coverage bound for that. I've also got the workers' comp, if you want to wait and do it, or do this work.
Let's do this, and then move to workers' comp. We entertain a motion, counsel? Take a motion, we approve the Gladfilter. Isn't that correctly, Joe?
Yes.
Bid of $128,215 for 2018 liability insurance. Have a motion?
Set.
Motion set, discussion.
Being in all favor, what we still need? Thank you, counsel.
All right, now we got that in other ways, Joe.
Workers' compensation now. The workers' compensation, experience modification. We have two pretty tough years. The experience modification has gone up to 1.69.
Did you tell them it got younger and stronger, though?
I probably didn't know I have, but, and they've really been good and worked with me on this. Now, I'm working on trying to get some of this reduced as far as your reserves because of the unfortunate situation of Gary. So maybe I can get that pulled out of here, and I might have some. So, we're...
Would we look at this at that time, or do we need to do that?
Well, we, it's not gonna make that big a difference, but if I can get it lowered two points, I mean, two points is two points.
What was the, what was the, right, last year?
It's 1.31. But to help offset this in the near, in the future, ran some figures for you here by doing deductible on workers' comp. Now, you'll see some of the losses as they pass this down are $125, $300. That counts against you too. The frequency will count this as much, if not more, than the severity. So if we can reduce these frequency claims by going with a deductible on the workers' compensation, then that might help us offset some of this. Now, what I'm gonna give you is, I ran numbers on current with no deductible, and then I ran $1,000 deductible, $300. So basically, what would happen, the claim would get paid by the insurance company, then they would bill you back for deductible. If it was a...
Can you read us those numbers, let's...
Okay.
Can hear it as well?
All right, the, your current premium based on zero deductible would be 192, 277.
And with zero deductible?
Zero deductible.
192?
192, 277.
Okay, and what was it last year?
130, I think it was 138. Okay, if we go to 1,000 deductible, it only cuts it down to like 187. 187, 128. And if you go to a 2,500 deductible, it goes to 183, 241.
So even with the deductible, would it count against us?
With the deductible, no. What you would do, you would report that it would go, it'd still be put on the unit stack cards, but it would show that it was a deductible, and it wouldn't be applied as a detrimental to you, in other words. But anything over 2,500.
And you brought in Travelers to shop, did you shop our workers' comp?
I did, I did. But with Travelers, they were gonna be around 180. But they wouldn't do the workers' comp without the package.
Okay.
And I still haven't seen a formal quote from them, so I don't, I don't know what they basically got.
Do we have enough small claims that the deductible would offset?
At least quite a few on here, the history.
I don't know.
You have the history. There are a few on there. A bunch of little small, they won't give you...
Now, I gave you the years that affect this year's mod. But I also have all the way back to 2010, if you'd like to look at small claims from 2010, all the way back to 2010.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think what the...
Joe, would a, do workers' comp carriers give a deduction for safety training?
Well, I have invested, you risk, and give that thing. And so anything we could do to form safety, safety making, employee training, anything or doing that documentation.
What's that amount to? Sorry? How much does that amount to? Move everything, kind of?
Well, it's going to affect, if we can get this modification, and I feel like we can if we start really working with this deductible program. When we get this modification, you can go, either go in a few years below the 1.0. In other words, you would have a credit file, and you would be below what the council rates.
2,500 deductible, that's per event, correct?
That's per event. Now, look at your claims, though, when it comes around to... Not all of them, you know, if you're looking at... You've got a lot of stuff, 500 and... By the way, your umbrella sits on top of your workers' comp.
Robert, you don't want to stay?
I used to, I used to have to sit and watch two boys play. I got a basketball game, I gotta go too.
This one's slowing down to a frog.
Y'all go ahead and enjoy yourselves, thank you.
See, Rob, thank you for coming. Okay, if we have a good year this year, do we anticipate coming down next year?
No, next two years, a big year after next before it starts.
Before it's done back there?
Right, before it starts rolling on. And you will have, you know, a pretty bad year drop off next year with Pepsi.
Looks like we need to work on the safety data, try to keep them safe. Just say, an insight to...
I couldn't do.
That's all, it was, it was probably fair for...
Do they got a, like a guideline that you use for working for those to that? As far as like going through the safety program and stuff?
I will, I can request their loss control directly to come sit down with Stella and go through the whole problem.
But with our type of employment, a lot of digging, a lot of climbing, and small injuries occur regularly. Thank God we never hitting bad series. But they can be at the emergency room before I hear about it. And once they do, the front office says, let the insurance handle it, workers' comp. Because it's like everyone worried that the injury could be life-threatening, or what can we do to stop this?
Here's what, we get the loss control person here and go through the procedures, and then every supervisor will be present. Need all the supervisors present and go through the procedure. However, when you do go to the emergency room, if, you know, if it's a sure enough emergency, let the workers' comp company handle it, they'll determine what it is. They'll bill you back for this $157 or whatever it is for the cut finger, and it doesn't show up on your experience. They bill you back for it, and then they handle the claim in case it does go bad.
So, but you still have your panel of doctors?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
But the emergency room is one of the panel members?
Right.
Couldn't, could we set up other doors, some part of the side to emergency room or something? I mean, if it's poison...
If it's a true emergency?
Well, no, I mean, I agree with that, but if it's poison, I'm gonna have a hard time paying an ER bill for that.
Yeah, somehow we have to determine that.
But that's how the workers' comp is.
What's that?
Yeah, it has a bunch of them there.
Yes, it can, yes, it absolutely is.
But that's when, that's when you know you're gonna get well or die, right? You can't live with it long.
Come on, I can do some more, just need a ER.
I mean, that's a perfect example, then, I didn't see that.
Exactly.
So how would we handle, keep that off our record?
Let you handle it?
Let the work, the workers' comp carrier handle it. Use whatever deductible you want it to use. Let them handle, they'll handle it, they'll take care of everything. And then they'll bill you for that $157.
So what, what are you going to pay Joe?
$1,000 deductible's gonna save 3,000 or 2,500. I mean, that's what, that's $9,000. And you can pay a lot of little claims for $9,000. You ain't kidding.
Lot of poison.
Lot of poison.
$1,000 cover a lot of small one.
And that's what they, there's probably...
You're looking for directions for us on?
Yes.
On deductible, and then you're gonna go back with, with the issue?
I get the price, we just come back with the loss control fee, we're gonna get working with two.
Did you, did you get those prices that he thought out?
John just showed it to me.
Is anybody formally in the motion?
What is it, what did John budget for this? Do you do it that?
We budgeted, I know for 40 something percent increase.
We, yeah, well, she, I gave her a heads up way ahead of time, so that she budgeted for that.
Yeah.
And what is the percentage difference?
Last year's was 40% to...
30, 30.
138.
138, I believe, with this off comp, yeah, I can point that at you.
192 was what we budgeted? 197.
So what if I move out? 183, back down.
187.
2500.
So you can roll this back down. I mean, I know it takes a year for you to keep pulling one of them.
But that's a formal motion, see why?
We can make a motion that would take along with the $2,500 deductible to save on our rate. At the 183, 240.
So what you're thinking, Joe?
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
So the justification, a lot of this stuff isn't gonna hit our record, is that?
Not this year.
Yeah.
Not, it'll be, now you will have a bad year drop off at the end of next year. But this actually won't come on until the following year. But you should see, if we have a good year, we're gonna see some change in the module of that.
But anything, anything under 2,500, we're out of pocket for, right?
You're out of pocket, yeah.
So that's where...
So you've got $9,000 in premium dollars to play with.
And it's not gonna hit our log rate?
Right.
Would that, would that go on our history?
Yes.
Unless, they'd be...
Claims won't be going on your history, it'll show that, you know, it'll be on your report here that the loss run. But it won't go on your unit stack cards as a loss.
And we tell them so we could expand, they go, hey, Clint, possibly lower premiums, go to the, not a cause of that, any couple years.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we have, we have good ones.
No, I didn't mean to say.
Second.
Okay, I love your second. I'm happy with the 2,500, it's, uh... I, I think it's, I think it's... I, I, I think it's, I think it's, uh, it's something that could offset future, on future costs. You know, the discussion, I might add something about adding a safety program to this. Through history.
Knowledge. What it does to us, we know the doctor.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think we need to look at it so we're not, so we've got a little better plan and not everybody's going to the emergency room, so we got some.
I'll break, I'll break the loss control people in and we'll meet with Stella and, and you.
Maybe to meet with our employees could help us a little.
Well, we can have an employee meeting too.
I hope we'll talk about that. I'd like to make it part of the motion that don't happen.
Add that to the motion? Any other discussion? Being on our pair of rubber shaw hands, thank you, council, thank you, Joe.
I've got one other thing, this is.
I thought you were done.
I've, I've talked, I'd like to be done. This is from my legislature.
You saved the worst for last year?
No. And Stella has budgeted for this as well. This is House Bill one forty-six, you don't have to say. House Bill one forty-six goes into effect January first and it says that municipalities will purchase cancer insurance for their firemen. And we, uh, looked at your firemen volunteers, you only have five volunteers currently. So that annual premium would be thirty-nine twenty-four and I just got word today that they've slightly lowered their rate, so it will not be hardly that much. So it's three thousand nine twenty-four, but again, it's gonna be a little bit.
It says shall. Date, uh, but they are constantly around toxic stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can you explain that a little bit to the council so public can understand what we're talking about?
Uh, they are toxic fumes, acids, smoke, oils, chemicals, ink.
And we recently had a fireman die of cancer.
So, yes, he did, and of course, this would have been enacted then and his spouse would have been able to get, he would have got some benefits from that as well as his. So that's legislature acted on that this year and I'm sure they're gonna be tweaking it some in the first quarter, but right now this is how it stands.
Would this be a, a add-on to our liability?
Right.
Any other motion?
I'm making a motion, we add to House Bill, uh, coverage for firemen, cancer coverage for firemen as addressed in State House Bill one forty-six, our general liability.
Got a motion, this second discussion? Being on our pair of rubber shaw hands, thank you, council. Thank you, Joe.
I promise, I'm.
That better be, if we're having more money. Son, I don't see alcohol license renewals.
Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight we have ten alcohol renewals for December. We were lacking thirteen, three out of them. You can't ever get in touch with these people here in the day. And, uh, we have three that have a pay yet.
Have they approached you?
No.
Who are they?
Woodbridge and West Church Street BP and Madeline's Cafe and Bakery.
Okay, as of the ninth, that, as of first of the year, they're.
I could be sent to thirty-first there.
They're done until, like, till February unless they.
Right.
Okay.
And the ones that, uh, you'll be considering tonight is Bubba Q, Fats Cafe, Angles, Shining Convenience, Platinum Mountain View Sitco, Quick Trip, Racetrack, Last Catch, Murphy USA and Zweeny, Rovela, Teak One LLC, which is, you know, is Dylan's, so top it off.
Any other motion to approve? What kind of motion you can send?
I'm making a motion, we approve alcohol license renewals, that's ready.
You have a motion?
Second.
Motion's second, discussion? Being on our pair of rubber shaw hands, thank you, council. Okay, I don't need, son. Request for approval to continue alcohol licenses, I don't need.
We have a, uh, request to approve continuance of the last I Love New York Pizza Jasper. Mister, I'm gonna try this.
Can we get Michael for you?
Graff Farzoda.
Close enough.
He has had his signs up, we've already gotten his fingerprints back, uh, all he's waiting is for the time that he has to advertise and that will come, we'll, we'll approve his license in the first week, in the first meeting in January.
I move, we make, uh, I move we allow the entity to continue advertisement for approval of alcohol license.
Motion to continue. Second. Motion's second, discussion? Being on our pair of rubber shaw hands, thank you, council. I don't need, uh, pretend you're Robert, sonny. All right. Thank you, nation, update, or?
We approved, the planning commission approved the annexation of AEMC, Alcoa Electric Membership Corporation. Their, uh, let me get, twenty-four point six acres of land over there and their office.
And their office.
And their office. And that was approved, all three.
It was, the recommendation was approved.
The recommendation to present it to the council was approved, I'm sorry.
Okay, and, uh, at that meeting we scored in, Mr. Copeland and.
We did.
Mr. Walker is now the chairman of the planning commission. We entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of planning commission, annexation of AEMC property located on five fifteen twenty-four point six acres.
So.
And the motion?
Second.
Motion's second, discussion? Being on our pair of. Oh, discussion.
Your finger was up.
Sorry, I got a bit fast. I think maybe during the transition of our leadership, we're, we've gotten, meaning, um, uh, Tim stepping down, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves on our public notices, sonny, at least according to my, um, investigations, if you want to call it that, so, um, I noticed that the public notice in the paper seemed to be a little short of the required minimum, um, which is fifteen days according to our ordinance. And I just want to make the council and yourself aware of that. Again, I could have, could have missed something in the paper, but that seemed to be the first time that I saw the notice was on the second. And I believe the meeting was on the sixteenth, so that's happened to fourteen days. So, now, the progress comes out on Wednesday, but I did speak to Dan about it and their legal publication dates are on Thursday, so I think it's just something we need to make sure that we fine-tend this a little bit. And again, I could have missed it, I, when you're looking for a specific thing in the paper, sometimes you.
They send me a, uh, well, they won't send it till after it's run and it was still running, but.
You said the legal dates were happening?
Fifteen to forty-five days, I believe, is what the ordinance says, Tom.
And here they say it's running October the nineteenth, October the twenty-seventh, November the second, November the ninth, and November the sixteenth.
I very well could have missed it, like I said, so if I did, then forgive me, I just, I, I, I thought I went through every paper, but when I talked to Dan, um, he didn't tell me that it ran out there, so I retract whatever.
Tell them we want our money back for, tell them we want our money back for advertising short changes.
There, that's the article, that's what I get from them, tell them anyway.
And he also did not imply to me that he verified those dates with me, so I'll, I can handle that personally.
All right. We call him right now and wake him up.
Those dates, nineteen, one, it's, it's every seven days after the nineteen, so. Thanks, sir.
Any other discussion? Being on our pair of rubber shaw hands, thank you, council. Council, item F, after the meeting the other evening, I left it on my desk, uh, we had a request for a, um, zoning change, well, actually wasn't a zoning change, the gentleman made a recommend, a request for a crematory in C two. And years ago, uh, if I might just have a moment and give you a little history about the day they stayed, we had, so that may need some support. Roper Funeral Home in two thousand and ten, I believe it was, came to me wanting to add crematory to his funeral home. And at that particular time, in, I think our, I guess, standard or whatever, didn't really want to, embalming bottles, meaning much less cremation.
Or, or with light.
I was trying to word that properly, but anyway, um, to talk about crematory and, uh, was kind of a, uh, it's not a positive way of looking at C two or, or zoning issues, but he brought with him at that time a request to place that in an existing funeral home and we, uh, took the Roswell ordinance, I believe in two thousand and ten, and plugged him in all that in order to get the crem, crematory in his facility. We sent out all the ads and, and he even talked about Mr. Grant coming over and asking him when he was gonna put that thing in. He told me today, he said, well, it's been in for two months or what, for two weeks, whatever timeframe it was, and, and that being said, I had one complaint, uh, on the funeral home's crematory, uh, during the past seven years. And so when I met with some gentlemen the other day who were wanting to put this over in, uh, the, uh, Noah Drive area, Noah Drive area, not my backyard, uh, I thought, well, it shouldn't be an issue because behind this particular, uh, crematory, uh, which would also have, I told me it would be, there would be a funeral home. And so my first thought was that shouldn't be a problem, we've already added crematory to our C two property. And then I, Sonny taught me before I left after the meeting, said, no, we have it, the C two, uh, crematory is still designated for manufacturing M one, I believe. So anyway, that being said, I began researching and having those gentlemen who were talking to me to send me some numbers, I think I put those, we put those in your file. And there is some discharge from, uh, the smoke stack of a crematory. And I called the gentleman back to see them after I got all my data and told him that the best I could probably hope for would be a, uh, a motion to put this off till next month or whatever, was my, what I told them. And the fact that I have not given y'all a chance to look over this until we hit you with this in the meeting, uh, or when I think we called you and told you when we gave you the, uh, the, the agenda, that's my statement I'm gonna stick with, so.
Is this attached to a, is this request attached to a future funeral home?
Well, that's what they told me and then I asked Dan and then it's some type of special funeral home I got this afternoon, uh, with, with limits, there are, they do embalm in the, the other items that you have, so, but I asked the gentleman to prepare to be at the council meeting next month.
I remember we tabled this.
I have a motion to table.
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion?
Do we, do we have crematory in our codes now?
Yes.
It is, I talked to Kevin today, he said that, that when he did this in two thousand and ten, it was specifically allowed if it were attached to a funeral home, is that what our?
That's what Roswell.
What it says?
Roswell, yes, sir.
Okay.
And this was, they told me they were gonna build one, but I would like to have more information for council before you get to make a decision on it, and that's why I'm asking them to be there next.
When they told us, they, they did tell the mayor that they were putting in a funeral home also.
It also came through the planning commission and had a public hearing.
You remember, you remember that?
Yeah, I remember pretty well, I believe I was drowned.
Yeah, but it's took a long time.
Uh, but, but it did come through the planning commission and, um, and there was a public meeting, uh, we don't have enough on this one yet.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? Being on our pair of, what was your hands? Thank you, that will be tabled till next month, thank you, son. Okay, Mayor's Report, Economic Development, Cherry.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, pleased to be with you this evening. Uh, as most of you know, this time of year is full of great joy and great celebration, but it's also a time of great spending. So we are working very closely with a, a group of merchants downtown in our tourism committee to create some events that help draw people into our community to spend their dollars here. Uh, they have created a twelve days of Southern Christmas initiative that they're going to be beginning to roll out, pretty much in this week's newspaper and other publications. This will be advertised in adjacent counties. And again, the purpose is to try to make sure that people, when they do their Christmas shopping, they do as much of it here in our community, uh, as well as come into our community, uh, to spend their money. And, you know, when we talk about tourism, this is exactly one of the things that we want to try to achieve, is to capture those dollars. Certainly, we'd love to have them come in and spend time sightseeing and looking at the Christmas decorations, but, but retail development is really the underlying, uh, economic driver that we are, uh, that we are addressing. The other thing I wanted to share also is, uh, one of the associations that we belong to is the Historic High Country Travel Association, focuses on North Georgia. Uh, they have put together a new brochure that is focusing on, quote, hidden treasures in North Georgia and they solicited information from communities. And we submitted a couple of different locations, including the Nelson Marble Museum to be included in this, and they accepted the Nelson Marble Museum and this brochure will be distributed throughout the state of Georgia. And, uh, so that gives them a, a little bit more exposure, I like the fact that it helps draw people throughout our community utilizing this brochure and again, helps enhance the chances that they're gonna be spending money in different locations and supporting our local businesses. Uh, the last thing I want to share this evening, unless there's any questions, which I'll be glad to answer, is that the, uh, the mountain bike park continues to move forward. Uh, they have three trails, uh, three miles of trails that they've completed, they anticipate having three more miles completed by the end of the month. They will be the speaker at the Temple Breakfast, uh, Tuesday the fourteenth, and, uh, they will be providing information about the park and the plans and the progress. And, uh, I really encourage, it's open to the public, and I encourage people that are interested in this to please, uh, come in, attend. We will also be giving away as one of our door prizes this month, a pretty nice mountain bike, uh, to go along with the park presentation. So again, there are some, a lot of very nice things, I think, happening this month in our community as it relates to trying to keep people here as well as give them a look and come and visit. And, and the mountain bike park is something that, you know, our local residents can certainly make use of. So that's what I have for this month, unless there are some questions that I would be glad to answer.
Questions, council?
Economic development, anything going?
Well, a couple, I mean, there's some things in the works, we do have some, as far as like heavy industry, because of some changes within some property ownership, site that I've really been focused on for quite some time and felt like we were gaining a lot of foremotion on that has been, once again, probably postponed till at least first quarter of next year before we have a clear path forward. I think as I've explained in the past, one of the issues we had, there was some friction between the property owner and the railroad and the railroad being acquired by holding company. About two years ago, that issue was taken off the table and we were making great progress. And like I said, there's been some changes outside of, you know, anything related to the community or economic development relating to the property ownership that has deferred decision-making. As far as light industrial, there's some activity, I think a new permit was granted for a new building over in the Sharp Mountain Industrial Park. And then there are some new buildings coming up over there off of Jump to Drive that's light industrial. And light industrial really has been our strong, our sweet spot as it relates to industrial type development. And certainly haven't abandoned light industrial or heavy industrial, but right now, again, some issues related to the heavy industrial side.
Still doing whatever we can on it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, we haven't taken any of our advertising costs off the table or anything like that, so we're still actively marketing those sites.
So is that the amount you're talking about?
That's correct.
I didn't know it changed hands.
Well, again, not the, it hasn't actually changed hands, there's just been some issues within the hours as it relates to family issues.
Questions, counsel? Thank you, Jerry. Okay, thanks. Lisa?
Counselor, in your pocket, you have the financial report comparison of the budget for the month of November. For the month of November, in the general fund, we collected ninety-eight thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars in sales tax. We're total of a year of one million fifty-three thousand. And we are at or below budget in each department in the general fund. In the hotel rental tax fund, we collected a total, and this includes the golf term, I mean, but it includes about sixteen dollars. We had a total of a hundred thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars in our hotel rental fund collected so far. Sploes, we collected seventy-six thousand five hundred forty dollars in sploes, money's for a total of eight hundred nineteen thousand eight sixty-nine. We have a balance, the balance in that account as of now, and we've already paid the last paving job, still have to pay the striping, but we've got a balance of thirty-five three thousand five hundred dollars in that account.
I missed that.
Three hundred, that's a little, three hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars in that account at this time. Water super fund, we're at above our budgeted revenues and we are below our budgeted expenses at this time. That's all.
You called the leachate, I missed it, did you?
I don't, I don't have a Lisa detail with me.
Take attention, she like, can't avoid it. Okay, any questions, counsel? Thank you, Lisa. I see Rose and other reports, Lonnie?
And Mayor and Council, as Lisa said, all the paving for this year has been completed, all the striping has been completed. The MIG for this coming year has been filed, so all that paperwork was a DOT.
You get that done today?
Yes, sir. And so, it wasn't due to January, in January, but.
Could have been done in August.
It has been filed, but the only other thing is the buzzards are back over in Hattie Woods and over in that area and.
We talked about that.
Been badging that just a little bit and the GIS system, I use it quite a bit today on manholes and sewer lines on, around the area over on north end of town. It's working great, pretty shaky, the island that y'all voted to purchase, and that's it. Any other questions?
The buzzards are other places besides Pine. I've seen them up the parole property town, I've seen them at the water tank over in Houston, that's a lot of our water tank. Things can't be good for our water tank.
Harrison back on Ridgeway Drive, I mentioned that.
Yes, you did.
Next, is it next year, will that be our last year of playing?
Of what?
Of playing.
Now, we've been fourth year, six year, six year.
Yeah, yeah, the start of fourteen, six years.
Questions, counsel? Thank you, Lonnie. Chief Love?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. City of Death Police Bureau for the month of November, responding to nine hundred seven calls, service responding to sixty-one motor vehicle accidents, issued total of forty citations for the following, one DUI, eight speeding, four shoplifting, two uninsured motors, twenty-four miscellaneous violations, one suspended or revoked, Georgia State Co. issued a total of sixty-five or a total of one oh five in city court. Seven warrants issued, state warrants for the following, three felony shoplifting, one misdemeanor shoplifting, one simple assault, one disorderly conduct and one burglary felony. Miscellaneous calls answered with fifty-six alarm calls, thirteen disorderly, nine harassment, five trespassing and ordering, seventy-two suspicious activity calls and seventeen domestic investigated, two burglars.
Questions, counsel?
Who were the burglars?
One of them was at Hannah Ridge, I think, and one was a business that we had a restaurant, not two of them were at the same, in the same location, same location.
Questions, counsel?
The parade wasn't playing well, I can see it, see it coming out there.
Was the crowd bigger, I tell you, people coming, it was not that big, but people were just.
They were just packed in.
Okay, just look big.
I think Georgia game had a lot to do with.
Weather had a crowd, though.
Motorcycle ride, we had that also.
We did?
This weekend.
I was thinking it'd be very, it's a lot of blows.
It was a long, it was a long parade, it lasted about thirty, forty-three minutes.
Festival lights parade.
And I think we had fourteen hundred motorcycle.
It was a big time.
It was, it grew up with the weather.
Thanks, Chief.
All right.
Chief Love?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Fourth month of November, city's fire department responded to a hundred and twelve emergencies, no water, no structural fires inside or out, no vehicle fires in or out, no grass or brush fires in or out, eleven motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside the city, none outside. Fifty-three, fifty-three emergency medical responses inside, forty-three outside, three other calls in to outside. A total of thirteen hundred fifty-four as of the end of the month. Fire inspection looked at two sets of plans for construction and conducted sixteen inspections.
Questions, counsel? Thank you, Chief.
You.
John, a little quick update?
What's going on, still working on the baseball, I think the city for all the work they've done on the lights.
Are they working?
They're still working, they're still working. They put a ton of work, a lot of effort in it and we do it particularly, thank y'all.
We have planned to replace those nets, we're making some funds where I left over the golf terms, taking on that this one.
Counsel, I've got another business coming for you, buddy, so we intend a motion.
Come with.